I'd like to call to order, please, the regular meeting on Monday, January 12. And immediately following this, we will have a work session. So would you please join Councilman Holman in the Pledge Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, as we advance through this year, be ever at our sides that our decisions are wise and will lead us to the long-term quality city that is our goal. There are many distractions and challenges, but with your guidance, we can succeed. Again, we ask your protection for our fire, police, and soldiers, and the comfort of your presence to those who have suffered a loss. Very simply, we ask your continued guidance and protection. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Holman. All right, on communications, first of all, we're all here this evening.
Yes.
Happy New Year.
Thank you.
I said that earlier for the work session, but I know you're all looking forward to this year. It's going to be exciting. We've got a lot of energy here, got a lot of things going on with the staff, people looking at our city, we're ready to go, okay? New governor, so I'll tell you, it's changing. All right, so the first communication tonight, item is 4.1, and it is to proclaim the week of January 12, 2015, as the Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce. And I will come down and read the proclamation. And would Mr. Safin, please come forward?
Mayor, if I may, while you're walking down there, we learned this weekend, the proper pronunciation of Mr.
Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Safin's last name, the proper pronunciation of Mr. Safin's last name, we are safe in his hands.
Oh, I heard that. I happened to be in the room when he said it.
And it only took you a year and a half.
You always have a little corn.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, it's a compliment. What's, is this the, this is, am I on? So come on over here. This is a, this is a great opportunity, and I really appreciate that everything you've done since you've been here. You've been a great contribution to our, to our West Valley, so thank you. And I know afterwards, you have a few words to say, and you're not a man of few words, so I'm anxious to hear.
I will be brave.
Yeah, okay, no, I'm just kidding. All right. This is Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce Week, January 12, 2015, where as the Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce provides support and resources for the businesses, the residents, and the visitors of the City of Goodyear and other three cities, three cities, not many, not many Chamber CEOs have that, that's very unique. And you create the Southwest Valley community, whereas members of the Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce are the leaders in business, government, and the community, representing a variety of industries dedicated to creating a region where we can all live, work, play, and prosper. I like the word prosper, how about you?
Me too.
Yeah, I know, you work hard on that. Whereas the Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce, acting as a state-designated tourist and a visitor center, has the privilege and responsibility of welcoming new friends to the community. And whereas the Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce is the voice of business and an advocate for free enterprise. And whereas the Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce partners with the Southwest Valley Cities to create jobs, to maintain economic stability, and to provide high-quality of life, and prepare a proud legacy for the future generations. And whereas we celebrate the next evolution of the Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce, signified by its rebranding efforts and renewed commitment to the Southwest Valley community. Thank you. Now, therefore, I, Georgia Lord, Mayor of the City of Goodyear, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of January 12 as the Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce Week, given under my hand in these free United States and the City of Goodyear on the 12th day of January 2015, to which I have caused the seal of the City of Goodyear to be affixed and have made this proclamation public. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, we got it. This is your proclamation. We have to pose here.
Do I open?
Yeah, it won't fall out. Did you get close enough? Yeah, I think, here you are.
Feel free to Photoshop a few pounds off of me, I won't mind that. But, Mayor, and City Council, thank you very much. Are you taking the picture of the back of my head, Councilmember Osborne?
Yeah.
Anybody's going to tweet this out.
I just put it on Facebook.
That's right, that's it.
I really hope it wasn't the back of my head going out on Facebook. Thank you very much for this proclamation. On behalf of the membership and the Board of Directors, we are certainly proud to be involved and partnered with the City of Goodyear and the other three cities that make up the Southwest Valley Chamber. This is a great community, and we are certainly glad to be part of it, and also very welcome or grateful for the welcome that we receive from everybody in the City of Goodyear. So I would like to bring everyone's attention to the back of the room. We have a number of our board members, members, you guys have to stand up at this point to be recognized. It is because of what the members and the board members do that make the Southwest Valley Chamber a great place and an asset to the entire Southwest Valley, if I'm allowed to say that. So thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing everybody at our grand unveiling party this Thursday.
The next communication item is a follow-up report from the members of the committee regarding the 2014 Goodyear Fill a Need Program. I'm waiting to see who comes up, because all these names are not quite right.
Mario.
Mario, please. Oh, Janet's here, okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're here tonight representing the Fill a Need Committee. With me tonight is Deanna Ortiz, who served as the Chair of the Committee this year. And we'd like to take a few moments tonight just to recognize the tremendous support that the program received this year. So many businesses, schools, organizations, so many people behind the scenes really stepped up and participated and contributed to the success of the program. It was a very, very successful year. We had 51 families that benefited from the program. It's an increase from 21 families last year, so more than doubled the response and the number of families that the program was able to serve. Over 100 children benefited from the program in '14. And just a few, a few minutes on background and purpose and some of the key sponsors that contributed this year. The program was established in 2005 by city employees. It was established to help families who are going through some difficult times during the holidays, whether it's loss of employment, or a significant illness, or loss of a loved one. And so it was, it's been running now for almost 10 years, and it's been extremely successful. It's grown consistently, and it's really neat to see the number of different organizations throughout our community who are really getting involved and, and help address this need. The big day is in December, when gifts are wrapped and donated to families, but the efforts really kick off over the summertime. The applications are, the program is advertised, committee members meet with families, listen to the circumstances, and, and figure out how best the program can, can help this year, constantly seeking fundraising opportunities, sponsorship opportunities. There were two restaurants this year, Black Bear Diner and also Borrow's Pizza. There was a certain day where they would set the proceeds aside from that day and contribute it, donate it to the program. But also, a lot of different community drives really took place. There was a toy drive in Newland that generated over 100 toys to the program. The Palm Valley Elementary School District, you know, 5th grade, the student council got behind a canned food drive, so donating 2,300 items to this, to the Fill a Need Program. And then also Pebble Creek organized a toy drive for the, for the program. This is a snapshot of all of the different organizations that really participated and contributed, and it's, it's amazing to see. Atlas Logistics, for example, they donated over 250 meals to families. Fries Food Stores donated gift cards. Rodeo Ford, Walmart, just, you know, behind each and every one of these businesses, there's a, there's a great story that really demonstrates the commitment and generosity that exists in the community. Deanna, would you like to touch base on, or highlight any of the companies online?
I think, as Mario stated, Atlas Logistics actually last year helped us and did a toy drive, and although that was really nice, she called this year and said, you know, we want to do something different. So she said, is there a way that we can, you know, put together a family meal so that each family, when we, you know, deliver their toys and deliver their, you know, necessities, like the toilet paper, and the shampoo, and, and the clothing, we just really want them to have a nice meal. So each one of those bags held three vegetables, some rolls, a dessert, you know, typically most of them were prepackaged, of course, so it was a cake mix and a frosting, and then fries went ahead, because Atlas Logistics is actually the logistics for the Fries Food Stores. So then Fries gave us the $10 gift card to buy anything else that, you know, might be special to them if it was a traditional dish. And so I think that was a really nice touch. Many of the supporters, whether it be cash, or a grant, or items that they, they donated, we couldn't do this program with 51 families with everybody collectively. We just need every single piece and item that we get, and it's just so nice to see that, basically, it's almost double the participation that we had last year from the business community. So they really, really stepped up. I mean, we had people calling us saying, how can we help? Which is a great thing to have. So with, without the participation of all of these schools, as well as the businesses and the employees, we really couldn't have done this program without them. So we just really want to thank everybody for supporting our efforts and making it so we were able to help 51 families have a better holiday season.
And lastly, just like to recognize the folks on the committee. Like to recognize Councilmember Wally Campbell for all of the, the work that she did to develop sponsorships and contribute to the program. Thank you very much for all the support. Our executive sponsor, Chief Luizy, and of course, the Chair, Deanna served as Chair, which was just a tremendous amount of work this year, and everybody else on the committee played a role too. So the Fire Cadet Program, they were amazing with the support that they do behind the scenes to help deliver everything and work, work kind of behind the scenes in a lot of different areas. So we really appreciate all the support and your support, and we're looking forward to 2015.
Thank you. I know Council's going to have some things to say, so who would like to start first? Vice Mayor Pizzello?
First of all, thank you. Of all the things that I'm proud of, what this city does, and what I mean by that is not just staff, but the thing I really love to tout is everybody stepping up. 400, I saw somewhere 470 volunteer hours of staff. I see all the individuals that participated, all the businesses and associations that participate on the outside. To me, that's what makes this community great, when things are in need, they step up. And I think that's what's a great thing about this community, you know, over the 25,000 hours of volunteer service through the out the air. So again, my heart and great thanks to all participating in this great event. There are people who would have never had a holiday of any kind without your assistance. I remember here when they were kicking off the, the tour, and just the eyes of the kids when they took the police cars up to do shopping over at Walmart. Just, I mean, just amazing you see the glow in those eyes. So again, I can't, can't thank you enough. I appreciate all the effort that you're doing, and the community, and the businesses that step up, and that's what makes this a great place. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilwoman Loretano?
I just pretty much want to echo that, and thank you, and, and all the staff, and everybody that helped organize this and get this together, because, you know, the economy's not back, and there's people out there hurting, and that don't have the funds. And it's so nice that in this, the season of sharing, and in December, that we had so many people, you know, it's a very busy season for everybody, but really put their community first, and all the volunteers, and all the people that donated, and it's just a heartfelt thank you from us.
Councilwoman Stip?
You know, it was, I'd forgotten when this started, and I was still on staff in 2005.
I was, that's my first year in council. So I, I wrapped gifts the first year I remember.
And, yeah, and how we, how we would wrap gifts at the, you know, at Station 183, and, and, you know, get all those things together. So to, to see where it started and to see where it is truly speaks volumes of the employees that we have. And when we talk about hiring the best and the brightest, and making sure we take care of them, this is just, it's a small way that the employees can pay back to the community. And I think that, that says a lot about the character of the people that we hire, and certainly a reflection of everybody who leads them, as I look out over this group every week. It really is a, it's a great testament to the staff and the way that, that we care for, care for our community. So thank you very much. I think the, what really came to me is, one of the things we talk about, and we've even got it in our strategic plan, is we want to, we want to be a big, small city. And this kind of thing keeps us connected to our residents, and, and you can only find this kind of activity in a small town. And the fact that we're able to continue to do it, and that it just continues to expand, and the enthusiasm and the support from the city manager's office just allows this to happen, and that's, that almost makes this a strategic initiative to, to keep moving forward. So thank you.
Councilwoman Osborne?
Well, there's not a lot to add to that, but I have to say that character does count. And it's, it's just so heartwarming knowing that the employees that we have in the city care about their community, because they don't have to do this. They don't have to step up like that. But they do, because, you know what, there's more to life sometimes than, than just your job. And, and that shows, and that speaks volumes, again, of, of the people that we have here. And, and I love the fact that not only with Fill a Need, but back to shop with a cop, and everything that, you know, this community does for each other really shows a great class of people that we have in our city, and, and the staff that we have that are out there with them, and I appreciate that every single day. Thanks.
Councilman Holman?
Well, I have to, I agree. I mean, there's, there's no way not to agree with, with what happens. But just in addition to that, as everyone here knows, for 30 years, I worked with the business community. And for 30 years, people told me that we can't keep this, that we cannot keep this people caring about people, and the fact that we're watching each other's back, and it, it is beautiful. It's what's kept me in, in Goodyear. And so I just want to come in, because this would be just one of the many efforts that the business community were a resource to make it better for our people, for, for everyone. And I just wanted to, to add that, because I think it, it can and should be a great source of pride to know that we're a team here, whether it's the Goodyear employees, whether it's our business community. We want a beautiful and welcoming community, and we're determined to be there.
Well, thank you. These are all just, did, Wally? Yes, no, no, please, please, your time.
The committee was amazing this year. This is my seventh year, I think, of being involved, because I was involved before I ever came on council. But the committee this year excelled in the way they handle our applications, they went out to visit with the families, the, the employees that did all the shopping, the employees that did all the wrapping. It was absolutely amazing. It was the best Santa's workshop I had ever seen. And Deanna did an extraordinary job keeping us all together, and it was just amazing, and it's just a joy to do it.
Well, lastly, I agree with everything that's been said up here tonight, but there's one thing I discovered lately by some of the interviews that I've had. I've had more time to really dig deep into why the city is the way it is. And it is what it is because of everything that council has said, but what we have allowed the people do, to do in Goodyear is take ownership of their city. So it's like they're just not a name and a number, they're active. And I think we don't want, ever want to lose that. I think we want to always go out to the public and bring them in. And so that's why we're in the 97 percentile, you know, would, would recommend our city to someone else to live in, so. And again, it's all backed by, thank you, staff, by the number of hours, and I know people say, well, they're paid. Well, no, they work a lot of hours that they're not paid. They dedicate to these special causes, so we really appreciate it. Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. I see the fire chief has just one more presentation.
Sorry to interrupt. We just wanted to recognize Deanna for all her hard work as the Chair. It's a thankless job, but small token of our appreciation to her tonight, so thank you.
We'd also just like to leave a card that was actually sent by one of the family members thanking us for the gifts. So it was a really cute little card, so we thought we'd leave that with you.
Thank you.
From the Cupid family.
Yeah, thank you. All right, let's go now to, it's a time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item, and I do have one card. If there's anybody else in the audience that would like that opportunity to speak, I certainly will recognize you. So I will call up Marco Gula Tuna, Tunja. Was it even close?
Yes, it was close.
Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, Councilmembers.
He's going to talk about the Estrella Gymnastics, and just let me kind of direct you on how this goes. Please speak your name and address, and let you know that there is a timeframe in which you can speak. You'll be limited to three minutes. The yellow light and the buzzer will let you know when you have 30 seconds left to speak. And before you begin, please identify yourself, as I said, and clearly state your address. Go ahead.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Marco Walotunia, and I am at 14200 West Bunbury Street, and it's about two minutes from here, walking, in a car about a minute. It's almost in front of the library. And the reason why I'm here is I come to claim the city. You said the city is for everybody, I'm coming to claim part of the city. I just got the opportunity to open a gymnastics place complex. I have a 30,000 square feet, and next two months, I'm going, adding another 10,000 square feet, so it's going to be 4,000 square feet. And it's to serve the community. I was a teacher for 40 years, a gymnast for 55 years, and I have a child, he's 10 years old. He goes to school here at Harvest, West Valley Harvest School, right here, a couple blocks from here. And so they called me and said, we had a great city, a great city council, great mayor, and I want to see if it was true, and it is true. So if you have money, or you don't have money, bring your children, bring some groceries, some fruit, and we'll work it out, things. So please, it's for the community, it's for the children. I was a gymnast myself, and it's incredible the doors that it opens to a child. I could not mention how beautiful it was for me, the experience. With no money, no income, no nothing, I got to travel most of the world. And yeah, meet a lot of people, eat a lot of food, and just be joyful. So bring your children. It doesn't matter whether you have money or not, and that is also for everyone, for the Hispanic community, for the Anglo community, for the one that is out in the road. Come in, I'll put you to fly in the air. Give me the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gila. Thank you very much. And I'm assuming there's no other speaker cards? And one more call to the public, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? All right, with that, let's go on to the next on the agenda. That's the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda? Item 6.1 through 6.4, by title only, please.
Item 6.1, approved draft minutes of a special meeting held on December 2, 2014, a regular meeting and a special meeting held on December 8, 2014, and a regular meeting and a special meeting held on December 15, 2014. Item 6.2, approve the issuance of a utility easement to Arizona Public Service Company and Arizona Corporation for the city modular office buildings located at the Goodyear Operations Center. Item 6.3, accept the dedication of an exclusive sewer line easement to outlet the future sewer line in Estrella Park Parcel 5.9 to the existing line in Estrella Parcels 95A and 95B. Item 6.4, accept the dedication of a 10-foot public utility easement by Great Hearts Academies on the north side of Granada Road, east of Bullard Avenue.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item from consent agenda? All right, with that, could I please have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Campbell, and a second from Vice Mayor Pizzello. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Pizzello?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
All right, that was quick. Let's go to the business, 7.1, to appoint the members to the Park and Recreation Advisory Commission, and Nathan Torres, Parks and Recreation Director, to present. Nathan?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you're aware, we have a very active Parks and Recreation Commission. This group was very involved in the development of the master plan, and really assist our department with making sure that our programs and services align with the needs and, and the desires of our residents. On behalf of the council subcommittee, specifically Councilmember Osborne, Councilmember Campbell, and Councilmember Holman, we'd like to recommend some appointments this evening to the Parks and Recreation Commission. The first is, we're recommending Kim Harris to the commission. She will vacate the role of, of alternate and move into active commissioner. We're also asking for the reappointment of Brian Murphy and Mr. John Richardson to the commission, as well as appoint Jerry Wilson to the alternate position. And so with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, what we're going to do here is, we're going to take this in three sections, is that correct? So we're going to start out with the first motion. I will need, in a second, to appoint alternate Kim Harris to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission to replace Nicole Baumgart with a term expiring January 12. Could I have a motion, please, in a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilwoman Loretano, and a second by Councilman Osborne. Open for council discussion? All right, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations. All right, let's go down to the other one. I need a motion, in a second, to reappoint Brian Murphy and John Robinson to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission with the terms expiring January 12, 2019. Open for council, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I heard a motion by Councilman Stip, and a second by Councilman Osborne. Open for council discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations. And one more, all right? So could I have a motion, in a second, please, to appoint Jerry Wilson as an alternate non-voting member to the Parks and Recreation Commission with a no-term expiration? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Councilwoman Loretano, and a second by Councilman Campbell. Open for council discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Now, don't go anywhere, because I know they're going to want to say something about this. So council, who would like to?
Did we do John Richards?
Yeah, we did.
Yes, we did.
I must have missed it, sorry.
That was, that was part of the second.
Yes, we did.
Sorry.
So if, any moment, you would like to, anybody have any, Councilwoman Loretano?
I'll start off this one by saying thank you. Again, as we've been talking about, we have the best, you know, community, the best citizens here that want to step up and get involved, and this is such an important area, because this is one of And this is such an important area, because this is one of the areas that our citizens, you know, rank as the, one of the highest things, is the community. So, thank you so much for your service, and we do appreciate all the time it takes. So, thank you.
We appreciate you. Go forth and do great things.
Vice Mayor?
Again, welcome aboard, and thank you for stepping up.
Well, it
Go ahead, Mayor.
I know I'd want to take away from
No, no, go ahead, please.
Councilman Campbell?
We just want to thank you for volunteering your time. It's wonderful that Kim, you and John both want to continue. That makes us happy, because you must like doing what you're doing. And Jerry, we're really pleased that you wanted to step up and become a member of the Park and Rec Commission. You've been very active in our community, and we do thank all three of you for the number of hours that you expend on behalf of our city. Thank you.
So, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you very much. Is there a picture going to be taken before the oath? You want to do the oath first? Go ahead, do the oath first, and then we'll do the picture taken.
All right, can I have, if you raise your right hand, then repeat after me? Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Your name.
Dusamally affirm
Dusamally affirm.
That I will support
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them
And defend them.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully
And I will faithfully.
And impartially
And impartially.
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Of Parks and Rec Commission member
Of Parks and Rec Commission member.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So, I do affirm.
So, I do affirm.
Congratulations.
Again, thank you very much. All right, now's the time for council to talk about reports, current events. So, who would like to start?
I'm sorry?
Who would like to start? Where you been? What you
Oh, wow, that can't click.
All right. Councilman Osborne?
Oh, okay. Just quickly, you know, I realized that I really never mentioned much about NLC in November. It was so, so quick, and then I wasn't here. But one thing that I have to say, I went to one of their work sessions on priority-based budgeting and just budgeting in general. And it was, it was really exciting that we took that step. And hearing more and more how other cities are starting to look at it or have, you know, jumped on that to see differences. But one of the other things that they discussed, which parts of it I would glean from that could be helpful to us, but especially the day that our city, and I think that it, we don't become districts until we're like 150,000.
150,000.
Right. But this would be something at that time that really I could see coming into play. And it's really called community-based budgeting. And something about that, for example, is say, in, I can, I can think of Australia Mountain Ranch for this, is something that the city says, we have a budget of, let's say, $100,000. And they turned around and said, community, what do you want to see with this $100,000 happen? And that's where it becomes the community-based budgeting. And we've done certain things like that, but it could be like, let's get together, and you tell us what you want in your park. Or you tell us, do you want a, a community garden? Or tell us, you know, it's about the community itself. It's, it's the city saying, this is what we have, and we want to use it to what you want. But that's what they called it, community-based budgeting. And so, I just thought that was really a cool concept for certain, not that our whole city would be that way, but there's, there's areas of our city that that really could come into play. And I know that we do our, a lot of our, our parks, council, our committees, different things like that. But this is really getting that community involved in what's happening. And so, I, I thought that was pretty cool. I appreciate, you know, I love the fact that just about everybody on this council attended the governor's inauguration and more, well, I shouldn't say more importantly, but just as important, the city of Avondale's inauguration. Because, you know, it really shows how this region comes together as a team, and I think that's important. Lastly, I drug mark with me to the American Meteorologist Society's conference. And they used some local people as guinea pigs for their first chance of kind of community discussion on extreme weather. And so, it was, it was pretty interesting. I don't know that it was much more than certain things that we had already heard, but it was kind of cool about, not, not the old argument of what is causing climate change, but the fact that, you know, things have changed. And, and what do we look at in the future? And how, especially in a developing city such as ours, what do we need to be thinking about? And it is the fact that when we, we don't have rain that's happening in three days like it used to happen, it's in one day. And so, how is that hitting, you know, the way that we have our infrastructure? Or it's the fact that they continue to see extreme heat days, and how will that work on our energy grid? So, it was kind of important, things like that.
Well, good, that was something new.
It was something new. It was, it was interesting.
Who would like to talk next? Councilman Stip?
I think I hit the button like three times. I gotta make sure I got it on. After our last council meeting in December, the following Thursday, we had AMWAB Board of Directors meeting, the Arizona Municipal Water, Water Users Association. Just for the council's benefit, the executive director, Kathy Ferris, has resigned. So, we are in the process of looking for a new executive director. It will certainly set back our voting discussion quite significantly. Not only is the fact that the executive director has left, but in addition to that, a number of the council members have changed over with the December 1 turnover in a number of the cities. So, we're virtually back to square one on that subject, but I think we'll probably have some internal discussions.
Just for public understanding
Sure.
Just tell them, I'm sorry, I'm getting over that food. Tell them what you were doing and what position you were looking in and so forth.
The city of Goodyear sits on the Board of Directors as a non-voting member, and has, it has been that way for 28 years. And the requirement to become voting is, you've got to meet six criteria. We meet five. The one that we don't meet is we're not an SRP customer. Because of
But we all have the same problems.
Exactly. We all have the exact same water problems. So, there is two efforts to make a change to that that would allow us to become voting members. And otherwise, the value of us continuing to pay dues and participate is fairly, you know, questionable at, at best. So, we'd been working all summer to try to get the, get the bylaws changed and move forward. And then this sudden turn of events at the November meeting. So, just to, to make everyone aware of what was happening and where, where things are going with Municipal Water Users Association. Water still is an issue for us in the state. We think we're well-positioned, but as, as with anything, it depends on snowfall and runoff in the Rockies and where we go. So, water will continue to be an issue for us in the years to come.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Just a question, could, I guess, maybe for Councilmember Stip? When is our next dues payment due?
I think we paid it in January was our next, was our next dues payment. I've looked to the man. I think we had talked, it was, we pay in July, and then we pay again in January. So, we paid in January. Our next one would be July. I would hope that our internal discussions bring resolution to this before the start of the fiscal year.
Councilman Loretano?
Pretty much what everyone else did, attended the governor's inauguration, which was really good and gives us a lot of hope, listening to his speech and where our budget's going to go, because that's really important. And attended the opening of the Australia, I want to get the name right here, the Australia Estates Retirement Living Facility over on Wiguan Boulevard. And it is a wonderful facility over there. And it, it was a niche that we've been missing. I was really shocked how quickly they got that up. On the 9th was also National Law Enforcement Day. I want to tell the chief to say thank you to all the men and women in his department. I think right now, we've been hearing a lot of negative nationwide about law enforcement. But I just want to say, everything I've always heard and seen from our department has been top-rate, especially under our chief, and just the caliber of people and the dedication of the people that serve our community. So, I do want to say thank you very much for that as well. And there's also, I believe, the chief sent this out, and I've seen it on several things. There's a documentary tomorrow night at 6:30 about heroin. And I think the chief sent that out to us as well. It's going to be on all the locals. Someone sent it out from the city, too. Was it you?
It came from the city manager's office, actually.
Okay, from Brian.
Matt McGory.
And I, I think everybody should watch that, because that is a drug that our young people are getting into. And it's something that, as parents and just people in the city, we need to keep an eye out on, on what's changing out there. So, thank you.
Great. Councilman Holman?
I just wanted to comment briefly that this year really has started out with some real synergism in our business community. Is, Sherry mentioned the, the one grand opening. But we had an accounting firm that had a ribbon cutting. And Wally's dream for seven years of having a Pollo Loco relocate.
There you go, Wally.
And what's really, I think what's really a high compliment to the city of Goodyear is that it's the first corporate El Pollo Loco. It's not a franchise. So, I just think that that's, and that's also, it's the first of the year. I think that's very exciting, and I think there's a lot more to come. And I'm with you, Mayor Lord. I really anticipate 2015 being a really fun year to, not, I'm not saying not challenging. But I am saying a fun year to be in the city of Goodyear.
Thank you. Wally?
Well, I went to everything everybody else said. But we did get to go to a farewell reception for Mayor Bob Barrett. And I was very pleased, because our mayor was the only mayor there. And it was, he was so appreciative for us to be there. And Mayor Lord had some very warm remarks for him, and it was, it was just a real nice event. I also attended several meetings within the community on the dog park, roundabouts. And I had breakfast to talk about rubberizing 303 by Pebble Creek. We've had this conversation for over a year. I also attended the State Board of Nursing Home Institute this morning. And this is going to be a busy week.
Well, first off, thank you for attending the Pollo Loco. I was so sorry that I couldn't go, because I've heard so much
We had samples.
From you. But I did go in later that afternoon, in between some of my events, and you left my car and thanked him. And so, I did get the little backpack.
Oh, good.
That was very nice. I just had a very busy, busy week. But a couple of things happened that I, you know, being a mayor, this is the part of being a mayor that is really so rewarding. I attended an Eagle Scout ceremony, Zachary Rodrick at the LD Church, and gave a talk. And, and it is inspiring. And by the way, Mr. Bennett was there, and he is, he, he's an Eagle Scout.
Yes.
And so, it was, but it was, it was just, I have to tell you, it's just so rewarding. The other thing I want to recommend that all of you go and look at, some of you were with me. Bill, you were with, Sherry was there, Joe was there. We went to Australia, I'm going to say it wrong, Australia Estates Retirement Community on Indian School. And I, I had to do a presentation. What a wonderful facility. Unbelievable. For the public, this is an advertisement, and I, and as a councilperson or mayor, I'm supposed to be doing this, but it, they're rental, and they're affordable. And they have everything. You can stay in this, in this home, and everything is done for you. Everything's paid for, except your telephone. And we took a tour of the rooms, and they were wonderful. And so, then I had just gone through, okay, I'm having a few The Groves. The Groves. And then I went earlier in the week to The Groves. So, you need to take a look at The Groves, too. What a wonderful facility. What a wonderful combination of retirement and memory center. We are so fortunate to have both of these in our city. And they're already, of course, I think the, Australia had 50-some people already signed up for, out of 135 rooms. And both of these facilities are, you know, people are moving into them already. So, economic development, staff that brought them to us. It, it really is, it is such, so good for our city. It's so good for a certain population, and we needed it desperately. So, and thank you for showing up at things this week. It's really nice to see this council show up, be there, talk to the people, let them know that they care. The one thing that they told me at the Australia, the management told me, said, this is the first city in all of the cities, they have opened up a facility where the mayor came and council came. Because most councils won't go anyplace on a Sunday. But we worked on a Friday, we worked on a Saturday, and we worked on a Sunday this week. So, that just tells you something. So, thank you, guys. I really appreciate it. Now, we have another, oh, yes, Councilman Stip?
We are, we've been celebrating local businesses opening. And we have a Jersey Mike's franchise that opened. And it is the only Jersey Mike's on the west side. On this west side.
We're talking about the far west side.
Yeah. They, I had the, the opportunity, when I saw Jersey Mike's, I've, I've, because of my travels, have seen and eaten at a Jersey Mike's in other places in the country. And it was really, really exciting to see them open. And I, it's a, it's a sub. But they, they fresh-cut the meat right there as they make the sandwich. So, I'm, I'm not going to do a commercial for Jersey Mike's. But, but I had the opportunity to talk to the owner, welcome him to the city. He had been open a couple of days by the time, you know, I attacked the front door. And, and they're, they're very, very happy to be here in, in the city. He was touting his west-side, you know, stronghold in, in the southwest valley. So, it was, it was, the, it was great for us. I was surprised to see it, however, that we didn't know that it was coming. It was not
It was not.
It was not on any, any advertisement or anything else. But regardless of the fact, whether it was a surprise or not, I was very glad to see them. And I know it was one of the Retail Coach suggestions that we had seen when it came. Potbelly's is the other one. So, Michelle, if you're listening, Potbelly's is the other quick sandwich shop, so.
I'm sorry, somebody else wants to speak? Sherry? Yeah, Sherry?
Just what Bill just said brought up what we've talked about at our retreat, getting like a list with the contact information, like the owner and an address, so we can, if we miss it, yeah, monthly, if we miss something, because it's like at 2 o'clock in the afternoon and have to work or something, we can stop by, we can send a letter. We know who to contact. That'd be great.
Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to add to Jersey Mike's. They're very active in the community. If you would have bought a sub, Litchfield Park Elementary School had a fundraiser through there. Excuse me, Palm Valley. So, if you had gotten the little coupon, they were giving out subs and plus a $2 contributions to the school. So, I know there was one day that we went, and there was a line all the way outside. So, I suspect the school raised a lot of money as a result of Jersey Mike's effort. So, you know, I just want to give a tip a hat for them for stepping up and helping the school district out.
Okay. With that, it's your time now, city manager.
Mayor and council, thank you. And I appreciate hearing the input from council as well. And there is a commitment to get the monthly list to council on activities as far as contacts and things like that. So, there will be one in January that will be coming out. Have a, so that's a follow-up item. The other, as it relates to AMWAB, that will be part of the budget process. We'll know as We'll know as we get closer to that whether we will plug into the budget, whether we continue to fund or, or not. So that, that certainly will be part of that process. Have two items. One is, and this hit our website today to let the public know, but there will be a water valve replacement that will be happening at Estrella Parkway and Van Buren. So while that doesn't sound like much, it, it will actually close, or the ability to turn right as you're southbound on Estrella Parkway this coming Monday, January 19th from 10:00 a.m. until the following morning, excuse me, 6:00 a.m. on January 19th to 10:00 a.m. on January 20th, which is a Tuesday. So southbound Estrella Parkway, you will not be able to turn right or west on Van Buren. Other than that, it should not be an impact to the motorists. It will be, though, there will be a water outage for some of the businesses in that area, the Safeway Plaza. They've all been notified, we're working with them, but we absolutely have to get this valve up and replaced. So that, that will be happening and we'll get council more information on that, but did want to give you that heads up. The other item, and I'm very pleased on this announcement, and actually I'm going to ask her to stand up and say a few words, but Michelle Lori, a lot of you know her as Michelle Ryder, but now using her married name officially and I think always. Anyway, this is her first full week. She, she did Goodyear Employee Orientation last week, so hitting the ground running this year, as you've seen in the, the release that went out, 20 years of public and private sector work. Most recently, Westmark is her president and CEO. And, but also as a Greater Phoenix Economic Council, she was vice president of external relations. Truly has a lot of knowledge of the west valley and I know a lot of energy for this position. So, Michelle?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I'm honored to be here. I've had the pleasure of working with most of you so far, but I am honored to be your newest employee at the city of Goodyear. And I did go through orientation, it was great, and I was really impressed with what an investment is made in the employees in terms of our knowledge and information. And I'd like to just echo some of the comments that were made here earlier tonight about the employees and the community of the city of Goodyear. I am a resident and I was really impressed by the generosity and the enthusiasm of the team. The leadership was one of the reasons I was so attracted to this position, but also the team, the economic development team and your city manager, Brian Dahlke, was what really attracted me to the position and I look forward to learning from them and learning from all of you. And really the opportunity to be able to build Goodyear is really attractive to me. So I am really thankful for this opportunity and I look forward to working hard for you.
Thank you. Any council?
Michelle?
Welcome. You, you are warning her that this is an unusual short evening of a council meeting with the subject matters tonight were not difficult, right?